All attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and that you should take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All supporting materials that have been provided members of this body are available in the town's website unless otherwise noted. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the chair notes otherwise. We're now going to turn to the first item on the agenda, but before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After each speaker concludes his or her remarks, the chair will go down the line of members inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. And please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. Again, there will not be public comment at this meeting. If there are any members of the public who do join the meeting or who are in the meeting now who do wish to comment, our suggestion is to please, after the meeting, please submit your comments by email or writing to the planning board. Each vote taken at this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. Not sure there will be any votes, but if there are, it'll be by roll call. And finally, if we encounter any technical difficulties such that the call has to be suspended or cut off, all matters on tonight's agenda will be and are going to be continued to a date and time certain, and that date and time will be April 21st at 7:00. Alright, that includes, that concludes our preliminaries. First item on our agenda is a 7:15 appointment for the presentation and discussion of an update on the Emory Grover Building Working Group. I'm going to ask, is Mr. Popper, are you going to give the presentation or Mr. Half?
Mr. Half will lead the presentation.
Alright, thank you. I'm going to recognize Hank Half then. Please, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, members of the planning board. We have been working now for over six months with PH plus A, working, looking at a variety of options for the school department. School department, as you know, currently resides in the Emory Grover Building, which is at 1331 Highland Avenue. And that facility is both out of date and too small. Subsequent, as they have been working their way through these options, the key has been to look at those that are most viable. And the select board has recently requested that we focus on two of those options, both of which would put the rent of, would put the school department back into a building at the current site. One of those options is to look at an addition and renovation to the existing building. The second is to look at the demolition and a new building. These are very schematic drawings that you'll see, but both of those options will require action by the planning board, both for some changes in the zoning bylaw related to the A1 district, particularly related to the FAR or floor area ratio. And the second would be waivers associated with parking. And so, Mr. Chair, what I'd like to do is to turn over the presentation. I will share my screen and turn over the presentation to Joel Bargman, who will initiate that. And can you see that screen?
Not yet.
Okay. Let me share screen.
We have it. Go ahead.
I'll make it slightly larger. There we go. Joel, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, I don't have the screen share though. I think if you're running it, Hank, and I'm getting a message saying you can't screen share.
I've got it on my screen.
No, I have it. I just can't control it.
No, you just tell me and I will change the slides.
Reese, are you on or are you off, Reese?
I am on. I just don't have a functioning camera.
Do you want to start the presentation then and we'll go through or?
If that's acceptable, I'd be happy to.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
The speaker now is Reese Schrader. Okay. Do I pronounce your last name correctly?
It's Schroder.
Schroder. Sorry. Thank you.
That's alright. Thank you for the opportunity to present our continuing study on behalf of the Permanent Public Building Committee of Emory Grover School Building and Site for the Continued Use by the Needham School Administration. This presentation addresses specific issues identified for planning board consideration. Slide two. This presentation focuses on two of six options we were asked to study. The order of options starts with a new building on the site as it is the option that best meets the program needs of the school administration. The second option involves renovation of the existing building with an addition. The numbering of these options in the following slides is a carryover from previous studies and is not meant to confuse. Slide three. Both options focus on Emory Grover Site located at 1330 Highland Avenue. The first option looks at taking the building down and constructing a new one to better solve program requirements, while the second option looks at renovating the Emory Grover Building with an addition. To summarize Needham zoning bylaws related to both options on the site, we have the following. Zoning District is A1. FAR not to exceed 0.5. Site area is 1.06 acres or 46,174 square feet. The maximum FAR for this site is 23,077 gross square feet. We have a three-story limit and a 40-foot height limit. Parking is one space per 300 square feet for office use. There are areas of non-conformance with the zoning for both options. The new building option is 30,419 gross square feet, which exceeds the FAR requirement at 0.66. The renovation and addition option is 34,266 gross square feet, which exceeds the FAR requirement at 0.74. The renovation and addition option is currently four stories at over 50 feet in height. The existing portion of the renovation and addition option does not meet the side yard setback requirement. The zoning bylaw parking requirement per 5.1.2 of the zoning bylaws is one space per 300 square feet office, which gives us 101 parking space requirement for the new building option and 114 parking spaces for the renovation and addition option. The new building option on-site parking provides 62 spaces, including three handicap spaces deficient by approximately 39 spaces. The renovation and addition option on-site parking provides 36 spaces, including two handicap spaces deficient by approximately 78 spaces. Since on-site parking is insufficient for both options, the Permanent Public Building Committee is considering off-site parking at Stephen Palmer Building Site on Pickering Street. Remote parking on Pickering Street at the Stephen Palmer Building will provide 24 spaces. The distance to this parking lot is greater than 500 feet. Remote parking is, or it must be within 300 feet of the site. Both building options will require the following zoning amendment and waivers. Zoning bylaw amendment is required for FAR to exceed 0.5. Zoning waivers required for number of parking spaces provided on-site. Zoning waivers required for additional future parking at Stephen Palmer Site. Zoning waiver is required for remote parking at a distance greater than 300 feet. The renovation and addition option further requires the following zoning waivers. Zoning waiver is required for height of building exceeding 40 feet by aligning floors. Zoning waiver is required for side yard setback. The existing is currently 11 feet off the property line. And finally, zoning waiver is required for existing non-conforming driveway opening on Highland Avenue. Slide number four.
Excuse me, this is Roger for meeting support. It looks like we lost Hank Half.
Okay.
So he's not on right now and so the PowerPoint presentation isn't showing.
Okay.
Yeah, just why don't you, can we?
Sorry, I was disconnected there.
He's back on. So if you want to share your screen again, Hank, they'll continue on.
Can you see that now?
Not yet.
Great. Slide number four. The proposed new building is positioned within zoning setback requirements, allowing the building to move closer to Highland Avenue and provides an entry plaza off Highland. All parking occurs behind the new building utilizing the existing curb cut and access easement. The building program includes a 1,200-square-foot conference center and the Needham School Information Technology Department. Slide five. Remote parking could be provided for both options by constructing a new parking lot on the Pickering Street side of Stephen Palmer, providing an additional 22 to 24 parking spaces as a one-way, double-loaded, angled parking lot. Currently, the two existing parking lots are dedicated for residents or their lease. These existing parking lots are not considered in this study. Slide six. Images on this slide and slide seven are very diagrammatic and are shown here only to indicate general massing of the new building. The architectural design is not vetted and will undergo significant study once a file option is determined. This view looks southeast from Highland Avenue. Slide seven. Again, this image is shown to suggest general massing only. This view is looking southwest from the North Access Drive to the parking area off Oakland. Slide eight. A cross-section diagram through the new construction option shows a full below-grade basement with the three-story building above. The floor-to-floor height is 13 feet, 4 inches to meet the 40-foot roof height. This section is cut east-west through the approximate center of the building, through the east main entry on the left side of the diagram and west Highland Avenue entry on the right side. Slide nine. For both options, we refer to the Table of Use Regulations per Section 4.3.1 of the zoning bylaws. The Emory Grover Site is zoned A1 apartment. It is not within the Needham Center Overlay District. The new construction option conforms to minimum lot area, minimum frontage, front setback, side setback, rear setback, maximum lot coverage, maximum stories, maximum height. Non-conformance of regulations are highlighted in orange. As mentioned on slide three, the FAR requirement for the site is 0.5. The existing Emory Grover Building has an FAR of 0.4. The proposed new building will exceed the maximum FAR at 0.66. A zoning bylaw amendment is required for new construction to exceed FAR of 0.5. For parking, we'll refer to Section 5.1 of the zoning bylaws. Based on one car per 300 square feet as office standard, the new construction option will require a minimum of 101 parking spaces. Currently, the existing parking lot at Emory Grover provides 67 parking spaces, including eight spaces in front of the building. The new construction option will provide 63 spaces on the site behind the building. 101 spaces are required. This parking count is non-conforming. A waiver is required for non-conforming parking count on-site. As discussed in slide five, an additional parking count of 22 or possibly 24 could be provided at Stephen Palmer Building on Pickering Street. Currently, this would be the only available parking to the school administration at the Stephen Palmer Site. This would bring the total available parking count to 85, which is non-conforming. A waiver is required for non-conforming parking count, including remote parking at Stephen Palmer. Slide 10. Continuing with Section 5.1.3 Parking Plan and Design Requirements, Part M Location allows for remote parking less than 300 feet away. The calculated distance from Emory Grover Site to the proposed parking lot on Pickering Street is 530 feet. A waiver is required for remote parking more than 300 feet away from Emory Grover for new construction. Slide 11. The next option is the renovation and addition option, where in addition is constructed to the existing Emory Grover Building and was referred to as Option Three. This option includes renovation of the existing building with construction of a 50-foot addition on the rear or east side. To accommodate, sorry.
I think we got Michael Kelly back.
Sorry about that.
That's alright. To accommodate the complete building program as determined by the school administration, renovation and addition offers opportunities to improve the functionality of the historic building, maintaining its presence on Highland Avenue while expanding the building to meet the needs of the school administration. The renovation and addition option will require the same bylaw amendment and waivers as for new construction as discussed and will require the following additional zoning waivers. A zoning waiver required for side yard setback. Zoning waiver for building height and floor alignments with existing. The zoning waiver for existing non-conforming driveway opening on Highland Avenue. Slide 12. I'm here. Slide 12?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Oh, there it is. Okay. My apologies. Emory Grover is positioned 60 feet back from the property line, well within zoning setback requirements, with parking in front and at the rear of the building utilizing the existing curb cuts and excess easement. The existing South Portico crosses the side yard setback line at 11 feet from the south property line and is in existing non-conforming condition. The addition conforms. The renovation and addition building program also includes 100, excuse me, 1,200-square-foot conference center and the Needham School Information Technology Department. Slide 13. Images on this slide and slide 14 are very diagrammatic and are shown here only to indicate general massing of the existing Emory Grover Building and the addition proposed on the east or rear side. The architectural design is not vetted and will undergo significant study once a file option is determined. This view looks southeast from Highland Avenue. As part of this option, the existing historic building would include exterior restoration. Slide 14. Again, this image is shown to suggest general massing only. This view is looking southwest from the North Access Drive off Oakland Avenue to the parking area. Slide 15. A cross-section diagram through the renovation and addition option shows the existing partially below-grade basement, which by definition counts as a floor with the three-story building above. The existing building is on the left with the addition on the right. The existing building is four stories. The floor-to-floor heights of the addition are aligned with the existing. This alignment exceeds the 40-foot maximum height. The existing Emory Grover Building is approximately 55 feet high and it is existing non-conforming. This section is cut east-west through the approximate center of the building, through the east main entry on the right side of the diagram. Slide 16. Zoning bylaw table of use regulations, Section 4.3.1, non-conforming regulations are highlighted in orange. In addition to the zoning amendments and waivers required for the new construction option, the following are required. The South Portico of the existing building is 11 feet from the south property line and is non-conforming. The new addition side yard setback is set at 20 feet and conforms. A zoning waiver is required for side yard setback for the existing non-conforming setback. The addition to the building is three stories and is in conformance. However, the height of the addition is determined by the existing floor-to-floor heights and alignments of floors and extends the addition above the 40-foot maximum. The additional height is non-conforming. A zoning waiver is required for exceeding the maximum building height of 40 feet and to align new floors with existing floors. Slide 17. The existing driveway entrance on Highland Avenue is non-conforming to remain. A zoning waiver is required for the non-conforming driveway entrance. To summarize, the zoning bylaw amendment and waivers determined as required, new construction option. Zoning bylaw amendment is required for FAR to exceed 0.5. A waiver is required for number of parking spaces provided on-site. A waiver is required for additional future parking at Stephen Palmer. A waiver is required for remote parking at distance greater than 300 feet. Renovation addition option. Zoning waiver is required for side yard setback. Waivers required for height of the building exceeding 40 feet by aligning floors. Zoning bylaw amendment is required for FAR to exceed 0.5. Waivers required for number parking spaces provided on-site. Waivers required for additional future parking at Stephen Palmer Site. Waivers required for remote parking at a distance greater than 300 feet. And a waiver is required for existing non-conforming driveway opening on Highland Avenue. That is the summary of the zoning requirements and I will turn it back over to Hank.
As you can see, there are a number of challenges that we have, but the reuse of that site and the location of the school department within the central area of Needham has been identified as a very important aspect, both by the school committee and by the school department. And these would be a number of waivers and actually changes in the zoning bylaw that would be necessary in order to accomplish this. As you may recall, we did go through zoning bylaw changes. Good. Zoning bylaw changes with the new school at Central Avenue. And we think that this is certainly achievable, but we are very interested in your feedback on the possibility and also the schedule and potentially the language that would be necessary for those zoning, zoning bylaw changes. This is a very preliminary discussion we're having, but we thought it very important and Lee encouraged us to come to the full board rather than take this just through the working group where we have been discussing these matters. So with that, I think I'll turn it back to the chair. Unless Steve, you have other comments?
No, that's great.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So since the town has concluded their presentation, I'm now going to turn to members of the board by name, one at a time, for any comments, questions, or anything else they'd like to present. I'll start with Jean. Jean McKnight. Hello? Jean, can you hear me?
You're muted, Jean.
There we go. I have a couple of comments and two questions. First comment is, I certainly agree with continuing to have the school administration in our downtown area. I think having a large number of public employees there helps with having a vibrant downtown with our restaurants and small shops. Second, I've always been a person very much in favor of historic preservation, but I do find myself torn on this particular project and really will have to give it a lot of thought. I have to, you know, considering the new construction as compared with the renovation and addition. I have two questions. In the presentation for the renovation and addition, the table shows 45, I mean, excuse me, shows 36 parking spaces on-site, but I count 45. There's 36 at the rear of the building and nine in the front. Why is it listed as having only 36 spaces? Are those nine in the front not in fact usable or not actually proposed to be used or what?
I believe that those were included in the 36 and that in fact there are only in the back 27 spaces.
Oh, huh. I wonder if the plan actually shows that. Well, okay, now I understand. It's really only 36 spaces. Okay. Then, oh, gosh. Yeah, with regard to the off-site parking, I understand that that property is presently out on a long-term lease by the town of Needham. And how feasible is it to be able to use that strip for parking?
That long-term lease, as we understand it, goes until 2027 currently. And it was a 50-year lease. The timing of the construction or reconstruction of the Emory Grover Building is such that it probably would not open or three to four years at the earliest. We have not explored in detail. not explored in detail putting in that additional parking or vetted that with any other committees other than the permanent public building committee, but the select board has offered it up really as the only alternative other than on-street parking to solve the deficiency.
Yeah, I do see that or appreciate that difficulty, but of course, that is two things. The future use of the Steven Palmer site, when the lease is up, it might very well be good to have the flexibility to use the entire site and not have a corner of it needed to be reserved by the town for its own use. And furthermore, you know, you walk down that street and it leads to Green Field and the open space look of the having the grass, you know, between the sidewalk and the building as it is now is pleasant and having a parking lot wouldn't be pleasant. So those are the considerations. And then going on to what zoning bylaw amendment is needed. I was just, I just pulled out my zoning map and I was trying to look for the site on the zoning map. Did you say that this is in the apartment A1 district?
Yes, that is correct.
I'm having a hard time seeing that. Let's see, May Street, if it is in the A1 district. So has consideration been been given to... Okay, I suppose that's true. Yeah. Has consideration been given to simply increasing the FAR for the A1 district? There are only a couple of A1 zoned areas in town. Would that be problematic? I think it's just throw out there as something that we, the planning board, might look into as an option. And I think I'm looking at the map. It looks like there are three such districts. One above Highland Avenue where I think there are some townhouse condos and then over off... Oh, of course, where I live, at Rosemary Ridge and the Petri apartment. That's all A1. So we might, we might take a look at that. That would be a simple, a simple solution if, but if we thought it wouldn't lead to some concerns about tearing down and reconstructing other places to a higher level.
We have not looked at that as an option. We really haven't looked at anything beyond the site, but... So I would defer to the planning director on that.
Sure. Well, those were my questions and comments. Perhaps as we go into the discussion, I'll have more, but.
Thank you. All right, just for clarification, Hank, when you say additional future parking at the Steven Palmer building, if I understand it, and correct me if I'm wrong, the town owns the entire Steven Palmer site currently?
Correct.
And from what you said about the lease termination date, 50-year lease termination date of 2027 sometime and expecting whatever you do at Emory Grover not to be ready for three or four years, when you say expected future parking, you're talking about approximately 2027 is the earliest that that parking is likely going to be available?
No, I believe that 22 to 24 spaces could be available prior. Part of the balance of the parking on that site is reserved for residents of the building and then there are maybe 15 to 20 spaces that are leased to the parochial school. And so the town would have to look at all the options in terms of increasing the parking, but we do believe that it would be possible to add the 22 to 24 additional spaces prior to the termination of that lease.
As soon as when?
As when the, when this building opened.
Okay. All right, I'm going to recognize Ted Owens now.
So does the existing Emory Grover building have any current historical designation?
Yes, it does. It is both on the state and the national register of historic places.
Would it be fair to say that the option of renovation and the addition would be more expensive than the option of tearing down and starting over?
The next step in the design process will be looking at cost estimating. There are many factors. Both of these options would require a temporary relocation of the school department to the Hillside School for the two-year construction period and the demolition option might well be delayed because of its historic, the historic nature of the property.
Okay, let me try again. So the current building, I'm under the impression that it is functionally obsolete. Is that correct?
That's correct. It, it does not have ADA access. It has no elevator. It is not sprinklered. It was fully code compliant when constructed, but it hasn't been renovated since the 1950s.
Fully code compliant in 1899. That's nice to know.
Correct.
Okay, I have no further questions.
All right, thank you, Ted. Bruce Eisenhardt, please.
Hi, thank you. Am I unmuted? So I guess echo some of the things Jean said, but I guess in the ideal world, you preserve the historic facade as much as you could and then put on an addition. I think the historic side would be very politically welcome in town and I find it much more aesthetically pleasing than the new construction. But what I see is the addition, when you add the addition to the option three, you add the addition to the renovation, you've created a much larger number of total gross square feet and thus less parking spaces. Is that correct? Am I right?
That's correct.
Okay, so I guess, you know, I don't like seeing parking on the front. I think that detracts aesthetically from any building along that corridor and it's in... But with option three to get the parking, you're, I think you're continuing the parking in the front of the building. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay, so I guess in an ideal world, maybe preserving the facade, taking away the parking in front in order to get a little bit more space and a little bit more open space in the back, some more parking spaces, is not doing quite as large in addition to the back. So making it more total gross square feet about equal with what the new construction option would be. Is that considered or what are the pluses and minuses of that?
We, we did look at preserving just the front facade of the building and then adding a footprint, which would be in essence what you saw on the total new construction.
Right.
It, it does give you, well, in order to do that, however, the design that BH plus A was looking at, there was a gap space, which was necessary structurally in order to separate the old building and the new building. And in the initial cost estimate, it actually came up to be the most expensive option. And so there, there were a number of compromises that that created.
So creating a smaller addition in the back, you're saying would be more expensive than the option three you now have, which has a larger addition in the back?
I think the smaller addition in the back doesn't meet the program requirements of the school.
Okay, but, but, but the, the new construction, I'm trying to get to option three with the same total square feet as the new construction. And now you're saying you can't do?
Well, it's hard to, it's hard to do because option three with the existing building is inefficient. So you're getting, you're not getting one-to-one usage out of the existing building as you're getting out of the new building. The existing building is, it has very large risers, structural columns and other elements that just can't be taken out. So your net, your efficiency of the building is such that you end up with a larger building to meet the program.
Okay, so the, the addition, the renovation of historic part and a smaller addition is going to be overall less efficient than the same size with just total new construction?
That is correct.
All right. I was trying to understand the logic of that.
Yeah.
Because again, in the ideal world, it would be nice to have no parking in the front, preserve the historic integrity, aesthetic of the building. But, but when you do that with your option three, you're really squeezing the property and running out of parking spaces. And I guess my other question about parking is, is my totally anecdotal, unscientific survey has been that back parking area is just always underutilized. Has there been some sort of study as to exactly what the real parking needs would be in the real world as opposed to how many, you know, you have now?
We haven't used a traffic consultant on this yet. The parking requirements were taken partly from zoning. The school administration has a parking requirement that meets their staff needs and that's lower than what would be required by zoning. But what, we also have these large multipurpose rooms and when those get used, that tends to peak the, provide a spike to the parking requirement. Reese, I think, what was the number that we need just for the school administration?
The school administration staff, I believe, was 54 plus the people coming over with the IT department. And that's a 3,400 square foot department with 10 employees, 10, actually 15 workstations. Then they have the van drivers that are in and out of the parking lot. So there are transitional needs for that parking lot as well. From the beginning, the school department has been requesting about 100 spaces and we've backed into that with zoning and it seems to be corroborated. To do less will probably mean people parking on the street and elsewhere and other areas.
That 100 number account takes into account the large meeting room.
Yeah.
For the school department, school administration in that.
Yes.
So it's not a daily need of spaces.
So you're a box today. Okay, I guess, again, I just, I would love to see that facade saved from the building and to make it aesthetically as pleasing as possible, not have the parking unless it's absolutely necessary. You're sort of saying it is. It's my concern. Thanks.
Thank you, Bruce. All right, Paul Alpert.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think that I don't have a lot to add to what Jean and Ted and Bruce have already, have already asked. I've got no problem with the request for the additional FAR. I think an FAR of 0.5 is extremely low and the renderings that I see here, especially since the, the buildings would meet the height requirements and are still going to be four stories, having, having FARs of 0.66 or 0.7 something, 0.75 or so is, is in my mind, not a problem. The parking, however, it, I'm glad that I'm last because I have the benefit of what I've heard and some of my questions have already been answered, the major one being what does the school department need? Because I was looking at the renderings and seeing all those offices. You know, I'm not wedded to one space per 300 square feet. I'm more concerned about how many employees are going to be in that building and how, what's the traffic going to be in and out of the building during the day? And you're telling me that we're talking 54 employees is the estimate of what's going to be in the building and probably within, with another 10 for the IT department. And option number three, just 36 spaces with nine of them being in the front, because I agree with Bruce, if we can get rid of the front parking, it will look a lot better. Option three just is nowhere near the amount of parking that is going to be needed. Parking on the street and in that area is, is, is already a problem. And I don't, I don't want to take a lot of parking away from the businesses in that area. So I've got a big problem on the parking side with, with option three. It looks like option one might work on the parking side. I'm not as wedded to preserving the facade as long as we have a good-looking building there. It doesn't need to be one with a facade that's more than 100 years old in my mind, but I, I, that's, that's, those are my comments. I'm fine with the FAR change requested. The parking to me is a huge problem, especially for option three.
All right, thank you, Mr. Alpert. All right, so I'm the last of the five to go forward and I benefit from everybody's comments and I agree with just about everything that's been said. I particularly agree with Paul. I don't think option three is going to work. I think the parking is going to be way too limited. And I'm not, you know, I'm not, I'm not as wedded to the historic nature of the building as some would be and I don't, certainly don't criticize them for being so. But I think we have limited options and to me, option one is clearly better than option three. And I don't have a problem with the FAR increase and we're going to need as much parking as we can get and option three doesn't deliver. So that's, that's my comment. Do, do any of the proponents want to make any response to anything that was said or asked by any of the members?
No, this is Steve. I appreciate the, the comments that have come through and I think they're really helpful from the standpoint that I think we got a better understanding of what seems to be the hard spots with regard to going forward. We will, we will price both estimates or both schemes to help us better understand the aspects of lease cost relative to this. We will, I don't know whether we've exhausted everything relative to the, the parking on the reno and add, but we may have done that and you may have given you our best, a best shot at it. So we do, we do appreciate it. I really don't have anything else. Given you our best, a best shot at it. So, um, we do, we do appreciate it. I, I really don't have anything else. Joel, do you have anything that? You feel? You'd like to try to extract from our discussion here?
No, I'm, I'm fine. I, I got the comments. I appreciate it. And I think we'd be good to regroup and, uh. Like you say, price both options.
Okay. Do you, do you have a sense of? The timing of how long it's going to take to do that? I'm, this is purely out of curiosity. Again, I'm not saying.
We, we're actually ready to start next week and it would be two weeks to. Get a cost estimate together. So we're looking the end of May to have reported back to permanent building committee and, and on that issue.
Okay. Okay.
I'm sorry, the, the end of April.
End of April. Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please, Ms. McCain.
May I? I just want to ask a follow-up question with regard to the building being on the federal and state. Registered historic buildings. Is a project, I know that school, you know, schools where children go to be educated, you get significant grant money from the state. Or, or some kind of special loan money from the state, uh, to build those schools. Is, I, I forget what that program is called, but it is, is that similar state funding available for an administration building like this? And if it were sought, would the fact that this is on a state register of historic buildings be a barrier to getting such funding?
The MSBA does not fund, uh, school administration. Buildings, uh, and if they are attached to a new school, they specifically exclude the funding for the school admin. Or district administration portion of that school. There might be other grants for historic preservation that could be. Requested, uh, in the renovation of the building. And from a funding point of view. It would open up the door for discussion with the CPA. So that similar to town hall, some percentage of the building could potentially be funded through CPA funds. But that's still as part of the tax levy, if you will. So the taxpayers are still paying for that, although there is some contribution by the state to the CPA. As you know, it's been going down over the years as more communities. Become part of that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jean. Any other questions or comments from anyone?
I have one question, which would be, um, whether the FAR is something that could be waived? Or does it specifically have to go back to town meeting? The way we went back to town meeting for the, uh, the school, the changes for the school in the. In the residential districts. And, and if we did have to go back to town meeting, what would be that timing? To go back to town meeting?
Well, first question first, can it be waived? I don't know the answer to that. Does anyone, any member know the answer to that?
Well, sometimes FARs can be increased through special prime, but I don't think this, Jean, he's, you, were you familiar with this zoning district?
No, I mean, I have the zoning bylaw right next to me, but I don't want to take the time to go through it. Whoever put together the table, however. Seemed to have really thoroughly reviewed our zoning bylaw. And, um, I'm, I'd be surprised to find if there was a waiver at, for the apartment one district of whatever the FAR was. And I think for many of the factors, particularly when you looked at the renovation addition option. The existing building has some non-conformities. So of course we can issue a special permit. To, um, for, uh. Something that's already non-conforming, but it's not presently non-conforming with regard to FAR. So we're stuck. We don't have that route for that particular factor.
Well, also in new construction, you really couldn't go that route either. Right?
Well, it, it depends. I mean, you can reconstruct a prior non-conforming structure per state law, you can issue a, you know, a permit. A special permit for reconstruction of a prior non-conforming structure. It is possible. Uh, but it's not non-conforming in that regard, I think.
Yeah.
Perhaps the issue. Yeah. We might consider that though, uh, on the reconstruction. I'll give it further thought.
Okay. And, uh. So I don't have a firm answer for you on that, Hank, but as far as the timing, if we do have to bring a zoning change to town meeting. I think we're talking at best this coming fall. It would be a very easy thing to, to write, I'm sure. Alex, do you, are you with us, aren't you, Alex? Do you have any sense of whether the, whether the timing would work for fall town meeting?
Well, I didn't talk to Lee about it. Um. The date for a fall town meeting, I think, was set, but I don't know what it is. But I think you said, Hank, that, or Joel, that the end of April is what you're looking at for.
Cost estimate.
Right. And so then from there you would determine, I'm just trying to think when you would even know. What you would definitively need from the zoning. I guess usually we hold a public hearing for fall town meeting when we do it in early September. That means that we're finalizing language. We don't meet very often in the summer. I don't know what the summer is going to hold though. We meet once in July, once in August. Sorry, I'm just brainstorming out loud. Um. Finalizing the language at the August meeting might be tight for noticing it. So we're finalizing language in July. So I, I guess that's sort of what it would be. If that's enough of an answer, sorry, I was just sort of thinking out loud there since I hadn't thought about it before.
All right. Um, I guess we all need to think about that, but. It, it seems to me, given the nature of the change you're talking about, which ought not to be complicated to write. That. It's, it's certainly feasible and possible that, um. It could be ready for the, for the fall, but. Maybe that's being optimistic, but I'm not so sure it is. That's the best guess, Hank, at this point.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else have any comments, questions? All right. I'd like to thank the presenters. I, I appreciate everybody's, uh, time and, uh, courtesy on this Zoom call. We're all kind of. Feeling our way here. So thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. Charts were great.
All right.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is, uh, item number two, a discussion of the Beth Israel Deaconess Hospital Needham. Request to extend a pre-existing non-conforming setback. And for this item, we have with us Mr. Michael Kelly.
Yes. How are you? My name is Mike Kelly. I'm the director of facilities for BI Needham. Just a brief history, uh, the non-conformance was many years before I started here. It was an awning that ran out and the non-conformance was, uh, nine feet from the property line. We needed to, uh, remove this awning in order to build a compounding pharmacy. For the hospital, uh, that required us to bring in what we called a germ-free trailer, which was used to compound the, the, actually chemotherapy. While the pharmacy was being constructed. In order to do that, the DPH required us, um, to build a vestibule, uh, in lieu of the awning. Uh, so that the compounding medication could be brought from the compounding pharmacy trailer to the patients that were going to use it. Chemo is, is made, uh, basically when the patient arrives, um, and then brought and used directly on the patients. Ultimately, the, the pharmacy was built and approved by DPHs and that the, the germ-free trailer went to another hospital doing the compounding. That left us with this structure, um, that aesthetically right now is, is an eyesore. It's vinyl sided. But it was built under, um, DPH regs. It was reviewed by, um, the Needham, uh, fire department. And fire alarm systems. It is a fully sprinkled eighteen gauge metal frame building. That presently is about twenty feet, uh, off of the property line. So you're picking up about eleven feet of, of, um. Variants from the nine going back to approximately twenty feet. We also propose if, uh, to, to add in either full brick or full brick to the exterior of that building. With a glass facade, sliding glass facade, uh, that would try to match the existing two buildings. Uh, we call them the north and the south. Uh, one built, um, in approximately nineteen forty-eight and the other one is nineteen sixty-five. So we would try to match that brick, um, as, as we possibly could, including the grout lines. We would also, uh, propose to remove the concrete, uh, half rounds that, uh, form the, the. Uh, oval driveway, we'll call it. So aesthetically it would be much more pleasing to look at and then we add in some, um, foliage to make it tie in with the neighborhood, similar to what we did with the OCC building. The Lincoln Street side of that building, uh, resembles a, a, a residence on that particular street. And presently our, our variance allows us and, and we do use it for the pickup and drop off of, uh, non-ambulance patients that are being, uh, picked up or dropped off and going back. To their homes, uh, they're coming in for a quick test, um, and it's maybe seven to eight times a day. And basically that's what we're looking for.
Okay, thank you. We do have some written materials part of our package.
Yes.
We've had an opportunity to review. All right. I'm, I'm going to, uh, again, recognize in order the members of the board for questions, comments. Uh, again, I'll start with Jean McCain.
Uh, yes, I, I reviewed our original, um, special permit, uh, that was issued in two thousand and seven. And I reviewed the amendment to special permit that was issued in March two thousand and nineteen. I also went and walked by and took a few photos of the. What is actually characterized in the two thousand and nineteen. Special permit amendment decision as a temporary structure. That is that portico that was mentioned, uh, was considered to be temporary addition to the hospital. Only to be used in, for a limited period of time, uh, while the, um, new pharmacy, compounding pharmacy was being constructed within the hospital. And, um. It seems to me that, um, the, the area in question, as I think, um, Mr. Kelly indicated. Should revert to its prior use as an entrance for persons being brought by ambulance in a non-emergency situation such as from a nursing home. But I don't see why that. Temporary steel frame, um, portico can't be removed and, and the situation go back to the original back entrance that was used for that purpose. Or if they want to have a nicer, bigger entrance, it, it, maybe we could take a look at that. But why does it need to be extended so far out, out from the hospital as to violate the front setback requirement? When it's just shaved back a few, a few feet, it would in fact conform with the front setback requirement. Also. The, um, masonry wall that's referred to that would be removed. I don't understand why it needs to be removed. And I think from the point of view of the people who live in the vicinity. You have, um, some, um. Plantings along, uh, Lincoln Street. Behind the plantings, you have this masonry wall and from the appearance of the wall, that wall has been there a long time. I mean, it could use a little upgrade here and there. It's, it's got some, um. Chips off the end, but it's actually an appealing feature of, of that driveway area. Uh, it seems to me it screens, uh, the ambulances coming in and the doors opening and shutting from the neighbors. And to some extent noise and light. So those are my comments. I'm, I guess my comments are indicating I'm feeling a little bit negative about this. The idea is, well, we came here, we'll put it up, it's going to be temporary, but now that we've got it, let us leave it there. And I really would like to think a little harder than that about it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Uh, Mr. Kelly, do you want to respond to, to what could be phrased as questions, the way Jean put it, she's questioning it? Those two aspects, do you want to respond to that or leave it as?
Yes, I can, I can respond to that. I mean, uh, we would be obligated based on the variance from two thousand and nineteen to put back the awning. Now, the awning, uh, aesthetically is not pleasing, um, the way it sticks out. Uh, and it hinders any, uh, future issues that we might have, um, like what's going on now with the COVID nineteen or. The loss of one of our, our examination tools, like a CAT scan. The reason the awning came down initially was the fact that, uh, the, the trailers that we would have to bring in to, to augment, uh, a CAT scan, a PET scan. Or, uh, what we did use it for, a compounding pharmacy, the awning is too small, short in height. So if we were to do this again down the road and we lost our PET scan, I'd have to take the awning back off again. I'd have to build another structure and I think the, 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 um, the economics makes sense, uh, to have something that the board could agree that was aesthetically pleasing to the. To the town and the neighborhood, uh, and then, uh, reduce, uh, issues that would come up down the road. As far as the, the, uh, the wall. We could do something aesthetically, uh, to make that much more pleasing than, than, than a, a concrete. But I think overall with an appropriate landscaping package, um, that, that wall, um, wouldn't be noticeable if we took down and did some appropriate plantings on different heights. And then that would also help in the noise, um, and then the, it, it defines it, I think. Personally, I think in from a, uh, from a landscape architect, it, it might provide a, a more aesthetically pleasing and it'll blend in more with the neighborhood than, than the way it is now. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Owens.
So, uh, my, my questions and comments, I think are going to echo some of what Jean had to say. I'm not entirely clear on why. The original promise. Needs to be cast aside. Would you, would you try again to convince me? That despite the fact that the hospital promised in two thousand and nineteen to return it to the condition in which we found it. And that the compounding pharmacy was a one-time event relating to, uh, you know, certain regulatory. Requirements that were imposed upon you. I, I'm not entirely following why the hospital thinks they don't have to meet that commitment. And should just go off in a different direction. Could you, could you review that again for me?
Yes. I mean, the hospital wants to adhere to that policy, but looking at, at what we had to do just to do this compounding pharmacy. Uh, we started to think about what potentially could fail down the road. You have. X-ray diagnostic equipment that, that is, is needed. If our CAT scan fails, we as a hospital have to go on what they call divert. Uh, if we don't have the ability to diagnose somebody with a heart attack. We divert our patients and they would go, uh, and travel a much greater distance, uh, to have their medical care, uh, looked at. So the ability to, to bring in quickly a mobile CAT scan or a mobile PET scan. And put it into that area there almost seamlessly. Um, if you remember, uh, we needed to get a crane, um, to bring in the, the, um, uh, germ-free trailer. This, this with the setback might give us the ability to. This this with the setback might give us the ability to bring in this mobile CAT scan and it would give us a a clear, safe passage for our patients to come from the emergency department into this portable CAT scan, if it ever does occur. And then it would be safer for down at Needham. I don't know what the percentages are, but a a high percentage of Needham residents utilize that this you'll need them. So that's the rationale that that we came up with to try to save this this vestibule protocol. Hopefully, that answers your question.
It it does answer my question, but like Jean, I don't find it persuasive. I have no further questions.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ted. Bruce Eisenhardt.
I actually had a question for Jean. Jean, I didn't quite understand something you said. Is what is the current front setback requirement? Are how far are they, just five feet over it with the with they're proposing?
Yes, my understanding is yes.
I'm not hearing Jean.
You have to unmute.
I'm sorry, Mr. Moore, say it again, please.
This is Bruce. So I just think I confirm, so the front setback requirement now is twenty five feet. And they're they're gonna and they're gonna be just twenty feet, just five feet difference. Is that right, Mr. Kelly?
No, the ultimately, I believe presently, we're approximately nine feet. So we're we're twenty one feet negative of the variance. If if this was approved, we'd end up in approximately twenty five feet from the property line, which would make us five feet over the.
Okay, so you'd just be five feet. So I guess Jean's question was, or her comment was, is is there some way just to reduce, I mean, five feet? Or is there just some way to bring it back five feet so you're within?
Potentially, I haven't looked at that, but potentially, I could look at that. So that we would be within the variance of thirty feet. That's a possibility.
Is it thirty feet or two?
Is it thirty feet is the variance, the setback requirement?
Setback, I think, is thirty.
Thirty.
I want to just make make a point. There never was a variance issued.
No, I understand that, yeah.
Variance is being referred to. Yeah, it's a special permit.
I'm sorry.
The planning board doesn't issue variances.
Yeah, right, so he's he's asking for another amendment to the special permit or amendment to the amendment, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so I think that's something that you should look into because that for me, that would be a critical determination. If you did get somehow within the setback, then, right? Jean, is that was that your concern?
I mean, I think there are a couple of ways we might even treat this as not even requiring a public hearing and just a a minor modification. I mean, it would it would depend, and I know we we think carefully about that. For example, Mr. Moore, Mr. Kelly said the the present amendment to special permit requires him to be to put the the
The awning back.
Awning back. As a matter of fact, it does. It's kind of silly to have that wording. But certainly, all we would have to come in and say, we don't want to put the awning back. We would vote to say that is a minor modification, no hearing required, there you go.
That's silly, that's right.
Yeah.
I agree with you there.
Keeping keeping the new entrance, even if it was shaved back a bit to to not violate the setback, would be an amendment to the special permit. And perhaps would think it was significant enough to have a hearing about it. But it it does seem as though, you know, it would be something that we would consider without kind of criticism that I I feel for with the
Right, yeah, no, I agree with you a hundred percent. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. You, Paul, Paul Alpert.
Okay, so where I'm coming from is that I see a huge difference between allowing a a disparity from the setback requirement for for an awning, which is high above and the building is is within the thirty foot setback versus a new structure that that comes out. Although I I I understand the hospital's desire and 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 the hospital's reasoning for wanting to keep the 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 structure and and I'm sympathetic to that. I think the difference between allowing the nine foot variance for the awning and having having the the and and I'm using the word variance, not not in the legal sense, but the variance from the thirty foot setback. For a structure like this, I think, requires an amendment and not a minor modification, which which would also give, I think, a better opportunity for the neighborhood to get notice and to look at what's being proposed and and to comment. So even though I'm sympathetic to the to the hospital's desire for this and I understand that things change from time to time and where you thought in two thousand and nineteen, you weren't going to need this structure and here we are a year, a year and a half later and and we go, oh gee, it, you know, facts, facts are different and facts change. And so I I I'm okay with that. I I would like to see the more formal application for for an amendment to the permit.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. I I actually have nothing to add. I would just be repeating what some other people have said. Mr. Kelly, do you want to add anything in response to anything you've heard?
No, I I I respect all of your comments. Basically, the intent of this would be, is this something that if we put an appropriate package together that we could then go in front of the board for a hearing? And and then however that process works, allowing time for our butters or neighbors to review the 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 design and then get on to the, after all of the public review, then get on to the planning board meeting for for an open forum and
That would be the process. Yeah, you 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 put a package together. I I would definitely suggest you talk to the neighbors before you come into the planning board. But it would be it would be unless you asked otherwise, it would very likely be with full public notice to all those entitled to notice. And that would be an open hearing, seeking an amendment to the existing series of permits that you have. And we would hear your presentation. We would have comments at the time when we look at your final package. We'd hear a public comment. Then we would and we would eventually decide.
So does this package warrant going to the public meeting? Do you think? I'm not asking for an answer and approval, it's just, does it make sense? Is it something that's worthwhile and then at least has the the potential?
Well, as far as the planning board is concerned, I think what you've heard is some comments and questions. But, you know, I I'll speak for the, to the extent that I can, I'll speak for the board. Discussions like this that we're having now are always somewhat tentative because we're never looking at the final package of what you've come up with.
Correct.
And so we're trying to give you whatever guidance we have based on, frankly, the little you've shown us. But as you put together a package and you hear comments from our butters and you see if you can handle and resolve whatever questions and problems they have, if the final package comes to us and the neighbors are in support, I I think you'll get a fair hearing. I can't, I certainly can't tell you that you definitely get what you want, but you get a fair hearing. And I think it's, yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't rule out the possibility at all.
All right, I appreciate it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just say a thing or two?
Yes.
I just wanted to, some of you kind of touched on it, but I just wanted to make sure that Michael, when, you know, and I can talk to you offline too, but when you do apply, if you decide to, to, in addition to talking about the dimensional changes and requirements that we've been discussing a lot of, to talk about if any use changes to that entrance. Because when the emergency room was moved in two thousand and seven ish, there was a lot of talk at that time with the neighborhood of what would be used at that at that location. And so we just want to be really clear about what you would be proposing to do there, even under emergency situations like the CAT scan that you mentioned, sort of what as best we can predict, what kind of emergency situations you would be using there. We really want to make sure to be very transparent. And I also just wanted to say, Michael Kelly, that I I believe, maybe even some of you know better than I do, that legally, we can accept applications fully electronically now, under this sort of situation that we're in. I will get the details about exactly how we're doing that as a town. Planning board hasn't formally accepted any applications that way yet, but I think the ZVA has. So anyway, we'll work it out with you, but it's all a little fluid right now.
Yes.
Where the town is still trying to figure out how we're gonna be signing documents, for example, like decisions electronically. We don't have any of the software or, so anyway, we're we're figuring it out. But we know that we can't hold up projects, we don't want to hold up projects. So Will, you and I can continue to talk offline, but I just kind of wanted to say that also.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. And I'll talk to you tomorrow. I'll send you an email and we'll, I'll talk to my bosses and we'll go from there and see how it all.
That sounds great. All right, we'll be in touch.
Thank you very much, have a great evening all, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next item on our agenda is number three, an update on the scope of the traffic study for the Highland Commercial one twenty eight zoning. Alex, do you want to give us a little intro on this?
Yeah, so I haven't really been too involved in this, but the what I know from Lee, that she just wanted to make sure that you are aware of, basically, is the new price here and that the plan is to get the appropriation, I think, at the, let's see, at the special town meeting in the spring and then to do the traffic counts in the fall. So it's basically just an update. If you have specific questions about anything, I would be happy to get the answers. I'm not gonna have them, but I'd be happy to facilitate finding anything out for you or, you know, taking it from there.
So does this proposed study anticipate doing traffic counts that will require traffic to have returned to normal by the fall? Do you know that?
Well, I guess I don't really know what discussions were around that. I think that the hope is that it would be close enough to get us the information that we need. But I I don't really know how to answer that, I'm sorry.
All right.
Marty, may I offer an editorial comment?
Please.
So we we go back to the key issue here, which is what can we provide to the finance committee? And what are they looking for and what will satisfy them? And based on what we know to date, I would say that unless traffic has returned to some semblance of normal, that they will not pay any attention to any traffic study we do. Certainly, it makes sense to go ahead and ask for the funding at the at the special inside the annual. But whether or not to actually pull the trigger on doing the testing, I think, is still a big unknown because we don't know when this is gonna end.
Yeah.
All right. I think that's that's unavoidable, I think. But as you say, is is there any reason to not yet seek the funding for this? I don't see it, I agree with you.
Oh, no.
But does anybody else see a reason not to now seek the funding?
I think we should definitely seek the funding.
So do I.
Me too.
We need to, we need to have it in 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 hand. And if if traffic isn't isn't approaching back to normal by September, I think we're all in a lot more trouble than we think we are in now. And we'd probably just have to shelve this project until the the economy returns to a more normal pace anyway.
All right, well, I I counted five in agreement that we should certainly seek the funding for this now. But I think, from what I'm hearing, I think you're all in agreement that Ted's right. We should not yet pull the trigger and tell them to go ahead until we're sure, go ahead with the traffic counts until we're sure that the traffic counts are gonna be meaningful to not just the FinCom, but us. Okay.
Marty, can you see that Adam has been raising his hand?
I I just, sorry, yes, go ahead, Adam, please. Just for the sake of the record, I I don't think I mentioned Adam's name before, Adam Block, who is a candidate for for a planning board coming up in the next election. He's been attending our recent meetings assiduously and which we appreciate. And so he's up on the issues. Adam, please go ahead, I recognize Adam.
Thanks, Marty, I appreciate it, Mr. Chair. I I my one question about this traffic study revised request is, what what happened to the original quest, original request of the, I think, thirty thousand? Had that been spent? That's the original traffic study, that has not been completed, is that right? Is that the purpose of this was to?
So Alex, is this a
If I am the one that is supposed to know this, I'm afraid I don't because Lee has really been managing this with Tony and I'm sorry, I I have not been following the details.
Okay, my my, I I can't give you a firm answer, Adam. My belief is the prior study has essentially been completed. Perhaps not a hundred percent, but it's pretty much done. I think this is new money for a new study.
From a consulting company?
Yes.
With a slightly altered scope of study.
That's right. And I'm gonna ask Alex if you if you have a follow up with Lee to make sure I'm right about that.
Yeah, I'll send her a text now, I'm not sure if I'll get a reply right away. But if if not, I'll certainly inform you another way.
Okay, you can let us know. All right, again, please, go ahead.
I mean, my memory is that in in advance of the town meeting, when it was a warrant article regarding the rezoning of the Muzzy site, we had a traffic study done. And I don't, I'm not aware of any other traffic study. Since then, we've been talking about the need for another traffic study. Is that everybody's recollection? But anyway, I think that is the case. So this is the proposal for the new traffic study. The only question I have about seeking the funds is if we put off actually engaging the company, GPI, I don't see anything in this proposal that holds the prices for a certain period of time or says they're only good until a certain period of time. I'd just only be concerned to make sure that these prices will still be good if we get the appropriation and then engage them more months than perhaps GPI presently anticipates.
That's a good question.
I'm sure Lee can do a check on that, but they're they're gonna be very happy for the business, trust. business, trust me.
Sure. Yeah. Adam, did you have a question as well?
I had a question and a comment. My, my comment was, I guess, in response to Gene. On the one hand, I recall that, that a traffic study had been done for the prior town meeting, that the results were presented at town meeting as effectively part of Liz's presentation. And, but I don't recall if that was the $30,000 request. I thought there was a subsequent request that FinCon accepted out of some fund that they had. And my thought was that this is effectively an amended request, that I don't think that the traffic study had been conducted subsequent to our failed effort at the last town meeting. Hence my, hence my question.
Well, I believe, I believe that part is true. I don't think, I don't think there's been another engagement for a further traffic count.
30,000 then has not been spent. And now we're effectively asking for 45, an additional increase of 15 or so approximately.
Let's find that out.
I think, I think this is the story, and I think Adam's memory on this is correct, that we thought by re-engaging the traffic engineer to look at some different scenarios for what, what would be the proposed zoning for the site, perhaps a lower Farr, lower heights. But using the old counts, we would go ahead with that. And then we began to feel that that might not work, because the old traffic counts were so old that we really needed to redo the traffic counts. So that's when we abandoned the idea of just re-engaging the same traffic engineer with different assumptions about what the proposed out development would include.
That makes sense, because the old traffic counts were almost five years old already.
Right.
Yeah.
Yep. My, my recollection is that at the annual town meeting, the, the traffic engineers were using the 2015 traffic study and applying it to the renewed use requests that we were making and, and the new dimensional requests that we were making, that, that they really didn't do a new traffic study. They were using the old data for the, for the, for the, for the new assumptions. And that's partly why it failed.
Yeah. Okay.
My other question went back to actually the second item on the agenda with regard to Beth Israel. If I may, Mr. Chair, my, my question was whether or not Beth Israel presently has a permanent CAT scan capability and/or a permanent PET scan capability. Do we know that? Because the gentleman, Mr. Kelly, referred to having transitional use or a temporary use of a mobile testing facility. And I wasn't sure if the hospital had already had that capability.
Well, I was understanding what he was saying as meaning if one of their existing went down, they could bring in a mobile unit till they got the existing unit back up. But maybe I was assuming too much. Is that a question?
That's what I heard him say also.
Oh, did I? I understood that.
Yeah. Is that something you could ask him tomorrow, Alex, when you talk to him?
Sure.
Okay.
What he said is, we were trying to think of how we would use this and what we came up with was, you know, I thought that was an interesting phrase.
I think we caught that. Yeah. Okay.
So the specific question that you want to know is, is what they have in-house on that?
Existing. CAT scan and CAT scan right now. Right.
I mean, during, I mean, the purpose is what he was saying is they, it sounded like they envisioned a scenario where they need to, if they find, if they find themselves in another unknown scenario like we're in today, if they need to update immediately their capability to be able to address a problem locally, that they have, that they have the accessibility to do that and the facility to do that and the permission, the legal right to do that, which, which, but that's a little different than I think, than what I hadn't perhaps understood. That's why it's one of the clarities. So I, I, I didn't, it sounded like from my interpretation, what he was saying was that they lacked the current capability. But the understanding, I think, of the chair, the vice chair and Paul, is that they currently have that facility. But if they need and have a future need to bring in additional capacity, that they can utilize that space for that purpose.
Right. And that was actually my understanding too.
Okay.
So, but I can, I can still double check.
Well, that's why Alex asked him to be very specific about what the uses for that space would be. So.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Anyone have anything further on item three? All right. Number four on the agenda, discussion of planning board meeting schedule. Alex, what do you have for us on this? We have a, we have an April 15th meeting coming up, which again, conducted by Zoom.
Right. So our April 15th meeting is going to be our hearing on the zoning proposals, which are both citizens petitions, both children's and then the citizens petition from George on the Greendale or Hunting area.
That's Attorney George Junta you're speaking of?
Yes. Sorry. Thank you. Yes. So those hearings are going to be on April 15th. That meeting starts at seven, because the hearing is starting at 7:05. So we might want to convene around 6:45 that day, assuming that works for everyone.
Let's plan on that. Yeah. Okay.
Okay. And then from there, going forward until this is over, I think, meeting at 7:15 works, because then we can still all plan to maybe convene beforehand with any of our other guest speakers, make sure that their technology is working. But we had originally, you know, before we were all homebound, we had an April 21st meeting, which now that the meeting that we're in right now, it has worked and we don't need to reschedule it. I think there's no need to do that. Lee and I don't have anything that we would need to talk about. I suppose, no, even, even the zoning hearings, if we need to continue them, the May meeting should work since town meeting isn't even until June. So we had not scheduled a, an early May meeting, because we usually have town meeting and we, and we just get any business that we need to get done before town meeting. So now we're proposing to add that early May meeting. And, and then from there, our schedule's sort of what we had for the second meeting in May and then for June. On this draft schedule, I also put the new town election date and the new town meeting date.
So the new May meeting that you're proposing to add is which day?
Is May 5th, which I know is Cinco de Mayo. I don't really know if that means anything to any of you. It doesn't really mean anything to me, but Tuesday, May 5th is what I propose to add.
So we're going to take off April 21?
Yes.
Okay.
And we're going to add May 5. Does that work for everyone?
Yes. I already have May 5 on my calendar, but I also had April 21, so I'm just going to delete April 21 now.
All right. Jean, May 5th work for you?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
And Ted? Is Ted still with us?
He probably spoke. He was muted.
I'm sorry. I had muted. Yes, it's fine.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Adam, May 5th going to be okay with you? Okay. I got a thumbs up there. And, okay. And then we go back to what we already had. Okay. Anything else on the meeting schedule that you want us to know, Alex?
So I've got, I've got May 19 on, on my calendar.
Yeah. And then May 19th would be, that was already scheduled. So we would do that and then we'll just be, except for next Wednesday, when we start at seven and we'll, we'll convene at 6:45. Every meeting going forward, while we're using Zoom, we'll start at 7:15. If that works for you guys, I mean, it partially is just, it works for my household with my toddler.
But we'll actually be on the Zoom at seven.
At seven.
Yeah. I think that is good, because then we'll always have, well, likely we'll have other participants. And so we can make sure they're up to speed and kind of, you know, whoever's chair can give them the lowdown.
Fine. Okay.
A question about June meetings?
Go ahead.
I had June 2nd on my calendar with a question mark, but now it's a definite. Is that right? June 2nd, is it definite?
Yes. I'm not remembering why it was a question mark.
Yeah, I'm not either, but I'm taking it off. Okay, done. Maybe because I didn't know when I'd be going to Colorado. So I'm not going in June 2nd for sure.
Yeah. I guess I do have one question on the planning board meeting schedule, although if you guys want to figure it out at a future meeting, you know, that's fine too. This, like I said earlier, this is, everything seems fluid right now. The idea of commitment seems strange. But for the second meeting in June, I think we had June 16th as our schedule, but there are five Tuesdays in June, I think. So we could do Tuesday, June 23rd also, which would give us a little space out from when that town meeting is scheduled, just if people think it sounds, it makes a little more sense. But honestly, either one is fine with me. And we can also take this up again when we're closer to this, because who knows what life will be like then.
Yeah, let's do that. Let's just wait on it.
Wait, wait. I, I, we're supposed to be in Colorado, leaving June 17th. So we, that
the June 23rd won't work to me, with me. But are we going to Colorado?
Who knows?
Who knows?
Right. All right. So let's revisit that in one of our May meetings. And if I do have a request for a public hearing that I have to schedule, I'll email you all. We will nail it down. But until then, maybe we can just sort of play it by ear or, you know, revisit.
Okay. Anybody have anything else on the schedule? Agenda item. Okay. Number five is minutes. Now, ahead of this meeting, Jean was good enough to have submitted some editorial changes to the minutes that you've submitted to us. Alex, did you receive all those?
Yeah. And I sent them to Elisa. So at your next, well, maybe not April 15th, but your May meeting, you will have a redlined version of those. So you can look at them more clearly.
We can vote on the three minutes that were not, not in draft form, but in revised form, if you'd like to.
Please, let's do that.
Okay. So I, the January 7th, there's just one very minor change. It's just a grammatical thing. So I would move that we accept the minutes of January 7th, 2020, with one change. And the paragraph under Highway Commercial 1 rezoning, that begin, it is the one, two, the fourth paragraph that begins with Mr. Jacob stated, in the very last sentence and the very last line, take out the words "there was" so that the sentence reads, "He feels the trust gap may be bridged a bit if an estimate of what the cost is were put out there." The words "there was" is just not needed and don't make sense. So that's my motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do you have a second? Yeah.
Yes, second.
Okay. We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor? I'm going to call the roll. Mr. Albert?
Yay.
Jean McKnight?
Yay.
Ted Owens?
Yes.
And Bruce Eisenhut?
Yes.
I'm also a yes. That's unanimous.
Right. And I have the minutes of December 17th and January 21 without change. Shall I include them in one motion?
Please.
Okay. I move that we accept the minutes as revised for December 17th, 2019, and January 21, 2020.
We have a second.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing no discussion. I'll call the roll. Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Ms. McKnight?
Yes.
Mr. Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Eisenhut?
Yes.
And I'm a yes also. That, that again is unanimous. But that's the minutes. Okay. Number six on our agenda, correspondence. Do we have any?
No.
Okay. That's easy then. And for number seven, report from planning director and board members. Alex, do we have anything?
Um, no.
All right. Board members, do we have anything? Paul, let's start with you.
No.
Jean?
Just wanted to say that I did view the zoning board of appeals hearing where public participation was allowed. And I just listened to the first hearing, just to get an idea of how that works. And I found it helpful to have done that. So I sort of recommend linking on to that and looking at it.
Okay. Ted?
No comment.
And Bruce?
No.
All right. I also do not have any reports to submit at this time. Okay. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, but before that, let me just say that this went better than I expected. And I appreciate everyone's cooperation. I think it actually was pretty well, pretty easily done, actually. I'm impressed.
We, we, we just got another picture on the screen.
And Adam, thank you also. And so, okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move we adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think I don't need to call the roll on that one. I guess Roger's not with us. Is he?
Yes, I'm here. Yep, I'm here. Yes.
Okay. Okay. Roger, thank you very much.
Thank you, Roger.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
We'll see you, will we see you again on April 15th?
More than likely, unless I can get Alex to take over things. But yeah.
Not on the hearing.
Definitely, definitely on the 15th. And I apologize for any confusion going back and forth with some of the initial emails and.
I don't know if you can hear me, but I seem to be losing my internet connection here. So I'm going to leave the meeting.
I think we all are. Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Bye, everyone. Take care of yourselves.
Be healthy.